He finds it. I mean, depending on the company, they wanted you to. Yeah. Your government. Forever.
So what's he doing? He stands there and he goes like this. He thinks it's funny.
Yeah.
And he said that to me. You know what I did? I fixed him up. Did I say that to us? Then our little.
Yeah, there, there, put it there. Yeah, just took it from up there.
He thought it was cool.
Okay.
That's what we're doing.
It was. It didn't work out.
I don't have a key to the.
But his, his whole.
So I said.
Yeah.
We need to order. Pledge of flag.
Pledge of the table.
Pledge in the centerpiece. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome, everybody. We want to, first off, let's have an approval for the agenda.
We can roll the poll.
Oh, here it is. Everybody's here, all right. Mr. Ziski. Daryl Nichols.
Here.
Jason Keen.
Here.
Kenneth Howard.
Here.
Amy Hirsch.
Here.
Doug Darnall.
Here.
And Chairman Cable is here. So let us look at the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda presented.
Is that Doug?
Yep.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Darnall, seconded by Mr. Nichols. Any discussion? Hearing none or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. The approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Move to amend the minutes to include the names of the officers of the election.
Okay.
Chairman Dan Cable, Vice Chairman Doug Darnall, Secretary Amy Hirsch.
There, the, the copy I had did not have anybody's names on it.
Yeah, I didn't put the names on it because the, the motion was, you know, you said to keep it as it is. I just copied it the way the, um.
All right.
The agenda was.
Anything else?
Doug made a motion.
Doug made a motion to add the names for the, after the, for the election to the minutes. Do I hear a second to do that?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Doug to amend the minutes, seconded by Daryl Nichols. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Didn't Doug just make that motion?
No, I did the amendment. We had to do a formal motion for the amendment. Now we have to approve the motion as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion to approve by Mr. Nichols, so I hear a second. Mr. Keen seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right. First citizen's time. First citizen's time, everybody's all set? All right. Thank you, we will go on to new business. Extractive operations, we're, we're looking for an update.
Okay.
Mr. Hayes.
Good evening, everybody, good to see you again. I'm Rob Hayes, land manager with Wholesome. We used to be Aggregant Industries, now we're Wholesome, you've probably seen the sign. The news to share, this time next year, we're going to be something else because Wholesome Global decided to spin off the U.S. and Canadian operations as a new company. So I don't know what we're going to be next year, acne, limestone or something.
Well, at least you get to use the shirt that you've had.
Yeah, that's great.
For quite a while.
Yeah.
I never get that after two years.
So we'll be a publicly traded company, just through U.S. and Canada, traded on the New York Stock Exchange sometime in 2025. This is a plan.
Okay.
New names to be announced. So, and here's, and I just give you an update on our operation over the last 12 months. Last year, and sorry, I didn't get a chance to blow up an aerial map, so we got a small one here, but I'll basically brief off of this. Last year, Planning Commission approved an expansion of what was approved previously to our site plan, up to this woodland limits on the east side and south side, after we widened the berm on the east side to widen that buffer in front of the Rogers Farm. And after, we also provided you with groundwater data from our quarterly monitoring that showed that our operations is not impacting wells in the area. So we appreciate getting that approval last year. In the last 12 months, we've begun stripping this area to the south of the woodland, constructed the berm, of course. And we're currently, as far as our mine face is concerned, we're about right here. And you can't really see it on this map, but here's the aerial, taken in May, we're about 100 feet east of that.
Okay.
So we're making progress. But we're about four years behind compared to what was approved in 2017. We lost two years because of the slowness of us getting capital approved for new equipment for this operation. So that was our fault, but also two years because the pandemic really slowed things down quite a bit. So based on where we're at now, we project it'll take another eight, if the economy hums along, eight years to as many as 12 years to get all the way mined to the, to the northwest corner. So our current plan, after we strip this area, is to, to mine this strip that's shaded in dark gray here, and then continue on counterclockwise to the extreme northwest corner. Yeah, so that's current operation plan. So our production's been fairly consistent, we really haven't seen a fall off in demand for construction aggregates, at least here locally, other parts of the country we have. And we expect to produce anywhere from a million to a million point one million tons of aggregates out of, of the Dundee Quarry this year. So just for those who may not be familiar with our operation, we blast at the, at the face, we transport material to a primary crusher slash feeder, which is located here, you can't really see it too well. There's a long conveyor run that goes south into Dundee Township, about a 4,000-foot conveyor. Then that material gets processed by a secondary crusher and other screens into the appropriate sized materials that we sell out of, out of our quarry. We still employ, depending on time of year, anywhere from 10 to 12 workers full-time. But we're always looking for good equipment operators, if you know of anybody, let me know. We seem to have quite a bit of turnover, probably because of the tight job market. Guys find better opportunities elsewhere and move on. On the environmental front, we have had some complaints with the hydrogen sulfide odors, as we've reported in previous years, but I should have brought another chart with me, the number of complaints per year have really fallen off. It's really a handful of complaints, but we're still under, under the microscope with Michigan Eagle to get it down to zero. The hydrogen, hydrogen peroxide treatment system that we installed two years ago now, I believe, has worked fairly well, but we're still fine tuning it to get all that sulfur knocked out of the air.
Do you get variations of the sulfur concentration based on seasons?
We do, yeah.
And so then you try to get that, that hydrogen peroxide right to act as precipitant because of that variation could be adding.
Yeah, it sure is. Yeah, on, on days with high relative humidity, you can really tell that we're getting some spikes in the hydrogen sulfide.
I can smell it really bad at my house, there's been a couple days last week, and it was, it was really bad.
Humid. Yeah, yeah. Well, we've, we've got a corrective action plan with Eagle that we're working on implementing, and like I said, hopefully, we get the bugs worked out of the system, where it knocks, it's not going to take care of all of it, but it's going to make sure it doesn't move offsite, so.
It only takes one part per million for the human nose to smell it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I do think it's very unusual. Yeah, I don't think it's close to neutral.
I was surprised that I was smelling it the other day.
You get that heavy overcast day.
Yeah. That's what, I smell it at the office across the road, especially, I enter through the basement, go upstairs, at lower level, you really smell it.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. Just based on its density, it's. Hangs, hangs close to the ground. So water, as far as environmental compliance with water, we've got a discharge permit through the federal government to discharge in Macon Creek. We're allowed to discharge five and a half million gallons per day, our average flow is about four million, so we're trying to make sure we don't exceed that, the maximum limit, otherwise we get in big trouble with the fence. As far as noise is concerned, we did have one formal blasting complaint, fairly recently, I think it was May or June, from a resident of Bigelow Road in Dundee Township. We were blasting down by this southeast corner, and the conditions weren't ideal, and we probably shouldn't have delayed, because there was low cloud cover that day, and the, the noise and vibration just reverberated, and she felt it. So called her right away, and as far as I know, she's satisfied with, with our, our efforts to control blasting. I, I do have a stack of brochures, you want to hold that up, Mike? From, this is from the township's consultant, the Vibertec. They put out a pretty good brochure, and they've shared with me, and I had, had them send some additional copies, I can leave it at your office, if you want to give it out to the public. Yeah. That explains blasting, how it's conducted, how it's, how it's monitored, how it's controlled to stay within limits, et cetera. So it's a pretty good brochure.
I got, I got one question here, Rebecca. With your discharge, is that fresh groundwater or is that sulfur water that going in, into the, to the creek?
It's, it's groundwater.
Groundwater.
But the sulfur is naturally occurring in the stone, so we pick up a lot of sulfur, and as it, as it moves through the ground quarry, material is so fine, and it goes airborne like crazy. And lastly, as far as community involvement, we want to get more involved in the community, we're a sponsor of Dundee's Bison Timon Celebration this weekend, one, one of the corporate sponsors. So we look forward to seeing all of you down there.
It's, it's got to be pretty consistent over the next year or two, your, your projections anyway.
Yeah, yeah, between the, the federal infrastructure bill and then the state funding that's, that's in the pipeline, I, I don't see any reason why it won't stay at least at 1.1 a year.
Always said we need the roads fixed.
Yeah.
That's the only way you get them fixed.
That's right.
Well, there's no other questions from the committee, we appreciate your time.
Excellent, thanks.
Thanks, Rob, for coming in.
Appreciate it, sir.
Okay. Take care.
Thanks.
Can I leave those with you?
Yeah. I don't need applause, good.
He got out of here pretty quick today, I know that.
And I appreciate you.
I'm seeing him stick around a lot longer.
Yeah, yeah, you're not kidding.
Thank you.
All right. Next on new business is Gerard Chrysler Pond, come in. We all got the email, I think it's in front of us too, but we haven't read through this, because Mike did such a good job of getting the email to us.
Matt, and then that you included a table of contents and numbered all the pages, made it very easy to go through once that came in.
Yep.
So that the whole permits were in place, and you had all the Eagle documentations.
So who wants to tell us about it?
I guess I can.
I'm pretty sure.
I guess we got it.
Oh, we got it. Nobody else does, so.
Do I need your hand or a bit?
No, nobody can put it up there. Um, this is for a 3.9 acre pond. And this is on Chrysler's property on Allison Road. And it's been, took a little while to get this going with all the things going on with the wetlands and hydrological studies and which, we didn't even need that stuff once it got, not approved. It's approved, but. But it's basically just a pond and 25 foot deep and one four slope pond. And I guess if you got questions, we'll go from there.
What's that?
1.3 or 3.9.
20. No.
Total property.
Oh, 20 acres.
20 acres.
And 20 acres and 3.95 per pond, and then what, you're gonna disrupt or use like 4.9 acres to?
We couldn't want that, uh, four, but we had to keep 500 feet from the prick and 500 feet from the river's pond. So we had to fit it in there.
Any other questions, Ed? Thanks for putting this together so well.
We got a statement. If anybody else is looking to get ponds around here or whatever, so you guys know, the DNR or State of Michigan. I've been trying to do this three years, right? That's why we bought the property out there.
Right.
So we have a new girl from Jackson County or whatever, and they're trying to classify it as a lake. I finally got involved, because I wasn't in a big hurry, because I'm, my life's a bottle right now. But I finally got involved and had looked everything up and talked with the state of Michigan. They're trying to classify ponds as lakes and had to do a whole bunch of rigmarole that you shouldn't have to do. I don't know, I missed what happened with the pond situation and the arguments going on around here, I just kind of came in late. But just so you're aware, if somebody's looking for it, make sure they're on, you know, a lake or a pond, because they're different, right? And there's a lot of stuff you got to go to when you get five plus acres than you don't when it's just a small little pond, just for, you know, like to have a pond.
Well, it used to be like that.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying now.
It used to be five acres of the pond would be considered a lake, but now the new person with Eagle, she decides on a personal basis.
That's not how government works, and that's how, I mean, I, I got it.
It's not, and that's what this, that's what changed so long.
You know, once I got involved, it changed the tune and got it back where it should be.
It's not based off of surface area or cubic volume of water, it's the discretion of that Eagle staff.
No, it's by, it's, it's got to be under five acres.
All right, under five acres, but what he was saying.
And there's a volume of water, but it's not close.
Depending on if she wants it, you have to do a hydro geological study, you have to do a wetland determination, and several other things, and it used to be, the rule of thumb was under five acres, you were considered a pond, you didn't have to do all that. And now it's depending on where it is and what she decides on what you have to do.
She messed up, is what she did.
She messed up.
And because it was, it was.
Oh.
It was more than 5, 500 feet from the crack. It wasn't, no wetlands.
Because it's, even with agriculture for USDA, requires that you have to do wetland determination, just about every farm in the entire county has had that done.
No, we don't usually have to.
Well, on the, the farms that are farming, they may do that.
Right, but that was, it was a hay field. It was. They, they, they went three different times, four times.
I can tell you where they found the wetlands, and it was on a neighbor's property, 700 yards away.
Yep.
I mean, that's what I went through when I finally got involved, because I'm a, it shouldn't take three years. And when I talked to them, and talked to their supervisor, they changed their tune real quick and got it done, and I went about this, so, just saying, I missed.
Is there either property owner on this?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
See how easy that was?
Oh, yeah. Should have came to meeting a long time ago, I guess, but. And I might have built an Indian burial ground too, so.
Oh, no.
No, don't mention it.
Don't say that.
I'm telling you that. Since I started building there, my family.
Everybody take a breath.
Yeah. Every, my whole family's been sick or died or almost died since I started building there, so. We won't put that in a fair mess.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Do we have any other, any other comments here, folks?
Thank you.
Guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. What was the, the actual measurement from the side of the property to the, the water surface area for, on, on, I believe?
It's more than 50 feet.
It looked like it from the scale.
It's, it's, it's it'd be 50 feet to, you know, not where the water is, but that where the bank starts.
Okay, right, all right.
If I am an Indian burial ground, do I pay taxes?
Uh, oh. That's the least of your worries. Seriously, seriously.
Meeting's next door.
There was a caller bought a piece of property down, and it was lying, but after he bought it, discovered that there was a, oh, Indian burial ground. Oh my gosh. That was about 30 years ago.
I can tell you the story.
It's like 30 years old.
The, the, the yellow lines, the driveway?
It says 50 feet.
The, the yellow line is the driveway. Yeah. Okay, there it is. All right. This is one you need to look at, then when I was looking on my computer, and that was one you need, right there. Yeah. What's your estimated time for construction for that, and what the, if the current demand stays constant?
I'm hoping to have everything out of the pond within six months in the stockpile or if it's going to be otherwise be done. So it's gonna, we've got a timeline to go from June 1st to.
No.
No?
Oh, yeah, to go from June 30th.
June 30th to, I can't, it was an eight call, I think.
For next year.
But yeah, right now with, with what's coming up, coming up.
So we're not allowed to excavate from April to June 30th because that was the one reason they did, they waived, even though we already got the water delineation and the hydro geological. If we moved the pond up and then we didn't dig during that time, then they were okay with that.
That's what we want to get.
It's for waterfall on wildlife.
Yes, yes.
Breeding, yeah.
Yes, or, and for grass growing and, and trees and stuff like that is what it is. They don't want you, they don't want us digging in that particular area during the wet season, so that's basically what it is.
Try to make it that permanent for everybody.
Probably outline.
It depends on where, where you're at, if you're Jackson, Jackson County is one thing, if you're Wayne County, it's different over there. So you just don't know.
So you're looking at starting June 3rd of 2025, then?
Nope.
Or, you know?
Just whenever we can.
Oh, once we.
Once the permit goes through, we're starting, but we're, we'll have to stop by April.
Okay.
Which, I'm pretty sure that's gonna happen, because we got a big job going. What you burn, burn up a five acre pond in three months, now it's done.
Okay. You say you can't after April, then, is that what it was?
Yeah, it's April 1st to June 30th, we can't pump or excavate.
I'll make sure that it gets done.
What's the distance from your pond to Canover's pond, that skinny corner across the road?
About 500.
Okay. And.
Over 5.
That's why we said it only went to a 3.9.
Yeah.
Because you had to.
Do that setback.
Yeah, Eagle required 500 feet.
And 500 foot from the ditch, it's kind of a trapazoid.
Yeah. Yeah. Didn't notice there was a lot more Eagle documentation in this current.
So on page, page 11, item number one under Y, it says that there'll be no de-watering or drawdown or pumping from March 30th through June 30th of any week for this particular site. No pumping, de-watering, or drawdown. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is that going for all of them now?
No, just this particular one where it's located and because of the.
You gotta go by it.
Because of what they thought was wetlands, but also because of the lake across the street, and it's just something with this particular area is why they wanted it that way. They've never had that stipulation before.
Did they have the requirement for the five, uh, monitoring wells then, to date?
No, that was originally with the hydro, but now that.
Yeah, once the hydro was almost done, and then they decided that, well, you don't have to do that now.
But they're already on the site plan, so we're just, we're leaving them.
That's a good thing, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it is, but the wells, the wells are still there.
Pardon me?
They're still there.
Yeah. How many did you have to put in the monitoring wells, is this 20 feet, 25 feet?
No, you only go down to hit play, like 20 feet.
Yeah. That's in, that's where the perch stucco fur is, then.
And, yeah, pretty shallow, shallow.
Is that where you're going on this pond until you get the clay?
Yeah.
It's not going to be 25 feet, yeah.
Yeah, about 17, 18.
And then you can add taper, because you're going to put some of the clay in the.
We're going to put some clay, yeah, and help keep the water because of the, this other little pond.
Yeah.
Are you going to bring in crush concrete for the road?
Uh, probably, not crush concrete, the, um.
Anything else? Yeah. Is there anything else that we need to be aware of, Mike?
Nothing I can think of.
Everything in order? I mean, you've certainly gone over this.
Yeah.
Several times, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
Anything that we need to be made aware of?
Most of Kabisky's report was basically just boilerplate, same thing, and is concerned about the, the thickness and the document, which is fine, because once you put that, that cover sheet or index on it, number the pages, that, that makes a lot of difference.
Also, once we got the actual permits, we took all that little application, you know, the big application and stuff out, and I condensed it more because it's just a lot of, too much.
Yeah. We did get a five-page review by Kabisky, just to make that comment so.
I see that. He spent his time on it. All right. Well. I'll open for direction, Mr. Quinn.
I have nothing with it, I mean. Are you looking for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I make that motion.
I have a motion to approve the project is presented. Do I hear a second?
Support. Give that, give that to us.
We got support in a couple of places, Mr. Howard or Mr. Darnall, either one.
Give it to Mr. Howard. I'm going to say just to make note in the motion that it's property number 58-10-022-004-00. I'm gonna say just, uh, to make note in the motion that it's property number fifty-eight dash ten dash zero two two dash zero zero four dash zero zero for a three point nine five acre pond on Also.
Three point nine zero.
Three point nine zero, okay, where did I get that five? I had that, and I had that on my note from the case team, I had three point nine on that one.
Who was it?
It was originally.
Jason, I just seconded, um, with that, with parcel number.
Scaled down.
All right. Any more discussion? Hearing nothing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Just, you've got Kabisky's report with your stack on too.
Yeah.
Because I thought the, the distance from the setback in the separate field, and that was all back in the early days.
All right. I believe that's all the new business. Let's move on to the master plan. And all Leroy's handiwork.
Aye. Who's senior, sir? Go blue.
Relax, Ian.
That was hard, that was hard for you.
Did I say that?
That was very hard for you, wasn't it?
Did you, uh, throw a blowgun?
Yeah. Looking out for pardon's call. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, along with the email that, that Mike sent out several days ago was all of Leroy's extensive work. I have looked through it. Um, was there anything you wanted to point out, Leroy?
Well, let's just go to the second page.
Okay.
With the number six. Basically, in your old ordinance, they have like, um, uh, itselena township or something there. But basically, um, when you do this stuff, you gotta figure out a way to use their boxes, which you can't change them unless it becomes pretty messy.
Right.
And, um, so I kept saying boxes, but I thought extra township would interest people more than itselena, which doesn't even touch us. That was something that we talked about a long time ago, but that's the information on how I put it together. If you notice, they use the two thousand ten, two thousand twenty information from the census. If you look at the bottom, you'll underneath the box, it says sources two thousand ten, two thousand twenty, census zero, and twenty five. And some of this stuff, it's kind of hard to tell whether it's, um, the census or semi cards information, but I tried to keep that separate. So basically, that's all we have to do. Everything else is exactly in the same format as your current master plan. This I refer to as a, uh, an update more than a replacement.
Right.
So it doesn't, um, doesn't replace the existing one. It's just for more information, you can use this to say, all right, our, um, township hasn't changed in the last forty years and you got a piece of documentation that tells you that. Because the old is for twenty, twenty years and this is basically for twenty years, so. And then some of this stuff from semi card runs to twenty twenty four and I see that documented in, uh, somewhere that's in there too, so. So at the bottom of the page, after part of the boxes, I found where I documented where I found the information. And again, I can't be a hundred percent sure, but the best thing I remember is because it's typically about two or three months, so. Get the cluster and start over again and stuff like that, so. So anyway, that's, that's how this went out, so it's not a replacement, it's, um, it's basically an update, this is the way I look at it. Save yourself forty, fifty thousand dollars and get the same information. But basically, our, um, configuration of our township as far as house counts and stuff like that, population estate is same and the number of people in a household is less because we have a lot of people that are single and we have a lot of older people that are single, you know, that their spouses or friends have passed on. And so the housing units and the people per house should see that, um, lower percentage than, um, the other stuff. By April, July first, twenty twenty four is when I finally gave up looking at stuff at the bottom of the page. And, um, if you get to page fifteen, it's, um, it's not a fifteen because it was, um, translated by the translator to the, um, alpha characters and so I can't put it in numeric, in alpha field. I tried for the longest time and it just doesn't happen, so. But that's about the only thing I can do, so. You can just go through it, you can take your master plan, look at it and kind of compare it, like I say. I think it's, um, more beneficial for extra township. If you also notice Dundee Township has really exploded and worked at their population. If you see all the activity around Dundee, the outlying parts of Dundee are outside the city limits, it puts it in the township.
Right.
And if you go back and look in, uh, history of the state of Michigan, Dundee was the biggest area of before, um, Michigan became a state and they kept, uh, section law parts of it, of the different, um, townships and stuff like that, so. At one time, I don't think, I think possibly part of London Township was actually part of Dundee's area at that time, so. That's what I came up with, so. I was shocked, so I called Dundee itself, I said, I can't believe this number, and they said, you're right, so.
Okay.
I put them in there, so.
One of the things, did, uh, Mike, did, did you change this map then today after we talked?
Yeah.
Okay, because I had my, I had made my notation and I knew what I'd seen in the email, I opened this out. Holy cow, he's got the state car call marked out.
You like that?
Thank you, yes, thank you, that's.
I need, I need to double check the borders on the west, but the rest are pretty good.
They're good, because when I opened up, I'm like, holy casket, got the phone already.
Ask and ye shall receive.
Because I even had made the notes, that way I could leave it with you, so you have. There, there was only one other thing, Leroy, that, uh, through, as I read the entire thing, not what you had done, but what we had already had in the master plan. If you go to, uh, it's under the implementation, under the Roman numeral nine, uh, implementation techniques. I don't know what page it's had on in here. It's page two in that chapter. That, the, I'm trying to find the right page in the document that you guys got. Like, because we got those things emailed as chapters. It was, it was under section nine. Let's see, I'm not, maybe it's not in this.
I didn't print all the.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah, it was, it was a phone book.
And if you, if you look at the email that you got, and it's one specifically at Roman numeral nine, implementation techniques. On, uh, page two of that, it says township zoning ordinance. There was some language in there that, it was from McKellen Associates that kind of caught my eye and I didn't like it because it just sounded negative. And I'll read it to you, what it says, it says London Township zoning ordinance is outdated, period. Then it starts the next sentence. A zoning ordinance is the primary tool a community can use to implement the goals and objectives of its comprehensive plan. The following is a list of ordinances issued identified during the review of the document. And so what I would suggest is that we delete that first line where it says the township ordinances are obsolete or outdated. It is simply, and then cross out the A on that, the second sentence, so then it just reads zoning ordinance is, is a primary tool a community can use to implement the goals and objectives of its comprehensive plan. And this is a positive statement that way.
Master plan. Yeah. I, I read the master plan. Yeah, that's, that's a good point, though.
You know, because I, I did, I read all that stuff that you guys sent. That was one thing I, I picked off, I don't, I need to catch that, if you need, that, I would move to amend that page two of part nine, implementation techniques, to delete the first line and the first letter A on that, so that it then reads zoning ordinance is a primary tool. If you want, you want that, Mike's gonna give that to.
Zoning ordinance is primary tool.
Give that to Amy, put it in the minutes.
I think I got it.
All right.
So did you make a motion on that?
Yes.
So I have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
I'll make it that.
Make an absolutely logical change. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds good. So then, can we go ahead and ask for a motion on Leroy's work and, uh, add this into the master plan? We just add it in as part of it as an update to what was already in place, we're not changing anything?
An addendum.
An addendum? Uh, we want to do this.
You need a motion.
What are you making the motion on is the question.
Well, we want to take Leroy's good work.
Yep.
And we want to get it added in, so we've done our due diligence and updated the master plan.
Yep.
Without going in and tearing apart what was there and inserting our numbers.
Right.
I mean, because it's a living, breathing thing. I think we, I think maybe an addendum is the way to do it.
Is that what you're thinking?
Support.
Or do you think, do you want me to take that to the board and ask them how they would like to proceed forward with that? So we're not doing something twice? You want to have the attorney take away or Kabisky or whomever? Have, have the attorney draft what that, and then.
There you go.
Would be, language would be this, as I said, we simply amended the, the master plan to update it and that's all you need for a statement and the date and the motion that, that approved it and the board accepted it.
So I, I mean, I can go to the board next week and say, you know, the planning commission, you know, we've okayed this, uh, we're just looking at the vehicle to how to get that in.
Leroy's got it, he did the work. Put your vote, Leroy.
Well, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to put this together, so if you look at the first page at the top, this is my suggestion. Where do you call it? So we're really only updating pages five through sixteen.
Okay.
And updating, do you want to update anything else?
Just that one page that I had that wasn't part of this, that was, uh, page two of.
Well, we've already, we've already supported a motion to add that as well.
So Leroy, why don't you move your language you got at the top and then we can move, just move it that way?
That was my plan.
Okay.
Very good, sir. I'm asking for it.
You made it this far, you got it.
Give it to me.
Okay.
You know, with the last name Z, you're used to this, what do you know, spark.
I apologize, Leroy.
I make a motion that the London Township planning convention on August fifth, twenty twenty four meeting, update the London Township master plan using the census, US census, twenty twenty and semi card, twenty twenty four information, updating pages five to sixteen.
Can we amend that motion then to include, uh?
No, I think that should be a separate motion.
Okay.
That's why you, you're, okay, yeah, you, you move it, I'll support it.
My point would be, Doug, Doug, my point would be is to bring an update.
Yes.
Okay, and then make that one.
All right, all right.
Because you're, you're adding something that's not in, it's not.
It's an update, all right.
I can't, just.
I see, I understand your opinion.
We got it, we got it, yeah.
You made the motion and Doug Darling seconded it?
Yeah.
And then the next meeting after we get it final, everything all in one, right, with the corrections and moving forward again, right? All right, I got it.
So we have a motion on the floor from Leroy where he wants to instruct us into, and you gotta have that in detail, Ms. Secretary.
She's got it.
She's got it. We have a second from Vice Chairman Darling on Leroy's motion, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. So now, to do with this, we already have a motion that was passed.
Yeah.
To also add this update.
Yeah.
To make it essentially more possible, that has already been passed.
Yeah.
So can we have a motion? That's right in the, right in the front page.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, so Leroy's motion added the updates. This is to change that, that first sentence on that, already passed.
I already did that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we gotta do that motion to add it. We did the motion to make the changes, now we gotta have a motion to add it into the master plan.
And you made that motion originally, right?
Yeah.
Yep. I'll make that motion added into the master plan.
Or, oh, wait, Doug Darling.
Take away.
Yeah, yeah, it's simply to delete the first line and the first letter of the second sentence.
Right, you made that motion.
So we need to have another vote to add this.
And just make the motion.
I thought we did. Okay, I'm sorry.
We backed up, we decided, we made that other motion.
So we're redoing.
We kind of left it late.
Okay.
But we've already passed it, but now that these updates have been approved to add to the master plan, let's change that one page, that one sentence at the front.
And I made that motion.
And Daryl has made that motion.
And I'll second it.
And, and Kenny will second it. Hearing no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried.
What page is that?
Page two. Page two of section nine.
Page two of section nine in the master plan. Do you have all this, Amy? Well, you can go back and watch the tape. I've kind of done that part twice. We're doing all right. I agree with you, Leroy, that needed to be added, what you did, you had it in, and I once again say, thank you for your work. Um, I think that's a nice addition, should be good for a few years now.
That's basically right, I didn't want it so good. Didn't try it because I still had stuff that wasn't completed.
Right. It's happened, you really knew what you did, she says, okay, you guys accepted your job.
Just taking that first part of the sentence out.
Yeah. I think we like, not to where I read line, the first sentence. And then cross out the A, so then it just reads zoning ordinances is the, the tool.
Zoning ordinances are the tool. All right. While we are on with that, we can go to the second citizen's stand.
Hi.
Hi.
You always sound so close. Um, I was wondering, uh, when did you guys receive the site plan from the season?
Gosh, what was it?
Last week, right?
Week and a half ago.
Yeah.
For the first initial one that was the big dump, they had everything, and then the second ones came last week.
Right.
Later on.
Came out last week.
So everybody had enough time to look at it.
I even printed off stuff that's horrible. Like I said, it adds more stuff.
I'm very happy to hear that you guys got it much, you guys got it sooner than this evening.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm very happy to hear that. Only other thing is, everybody get out and vote tomorrow.
All right.
You, use your, use your voice.
Some people could have already voted.
No matter, no matter which way you vote, just vote. Absolutely.
Does that mean I can vote again?
You know what, if I, if I could pass an amendment that.
Vote early, vote often.
You've been so much work in the last couple of months.
Well, get out and vote if you haven't voted already.
All right.
Leroy, you get to a certain age, you get to vote twice, right?
Why not? Why not?
Yeah.
Well, that age is over.
Yeah, I don't know if I did this yet.
Oh, there you go. So is there any commissioner comments?
I got a commissioner comment.
All right.
I got a, really, I got a question for, because we got somebody in here running for office for London Township, right? So I know a couple of months back, London Township, the board of trustees okayed some pay raises, which I certainly disagreed with, and so did the other trustees. So my question to you, since you're running for an office that received the biggest pay raise of all, would you be willing to back that up?
I've already been, I've already been researching how I can decrease the pay raise.
Back to where it was, that's my question, are you gonna be willing to put it back to where it was before she?
Absolutely, until bud, until budget time, because it, the way I see it, okay, and I'm not saying a huge pay raise.
No, this was just a yes or no question, it was my question, that's why I'm asking you.
No, I, I absolutely wouldn't mind taking it back to what it was.
So yes, you will.
Yeah, I've, I've already been researching how I can do it legally. I, I literally, I honest to God have.
That's, that's all I wanted to know, because you know where I stood on that.
Ever since I decided, you know, well, when all of the, huh?
Can you legally?
Uh, actually, there, from what I've been reading, it's, it's really difficult for some, for like, somebody to try and decrease the board's wages.
Yeah.
But, um, if the person wants to decrease their wage, that, there might be some wiggle room there. Um, I, I really need to, like I said, I've been researching it, and it's, there's not much on it.
I'll help you research. Are we flirting with campaigning here?
Yes.
No, no, I just asked her a question.
No, I'm just answering the question.
I, no, I'm not, I'm not judging either way, I'm just posing, I'm just posing the question, you know.
We did have a president to give all his pay away.
He never took his, he never took his.
Never took his, put it aside, sent it somewhere else, so.
I don't think it should be knocked all the way down to what it was, because it had been a very, very long time since they had gotten any raises. I tried, I tried. That's kinda what I was saying, you know, come. I tried to be on the committee for. The compensation committee. Yeah, the compensation committee, and nobody would join it. Um, but it, it had been many, many years since they had gotten any kind of pay raises. I feel that it was necessary for the board to get a pay raise, not necessarily the increase that they received. What was it, six thousand dollars? But.
Might have been more than that.
No, I think it got knocked back to six thousand. To know that they needed, you know, a little bit of a.
Right, I mean, everybody lives in this township, and you volunteer in this township, and if you care about this township, I think you should, you know, go ahead and do what you did. You heard what I said, I mean, you can back that tape up, because I said that I don't believe that the trustees should even get a chat for doing that. If you wanna come and support your township, then I think you oughta come and support your township, because honestly, the planning commission spends more time on stuff than some of the township board members spend. Am I wrong? And he was a former supervisor.
I, I agree.
Our two bookends here. And the board members didn't.
Our, our, our bookends on this commission are, are tremendous resources that we all reach out to.
Yeah.
Absolutely. For forty-five bucks or whatever it is for this, come on.
Be elected and cost.
Come on. You know, Leroy, Leroy has put hours and hours and days just in this, and I commend you, Leroy. You have done a fantastic, knock, knock it right out of the park job. So that's why I asked that question, Amanda. You know what, you can back that tape up and we can see what I said.
You can go back months back, when that raise was brought up, and I griped about it, I was against it.
Not as much as I did.
Well, I don't have as big a mouth as you do.
We may beg to differ on that.
Okay, your voice is deeper.
Do, do we, do we have any more commissioner comments?
I also wanna thank Leroy.
Absolutely.
All right. I guess I'm looking for the final motion then.
Thank you, Leroy, motion to adjourn. Support, thank you, Leroy.
He's got a story down there, I have one more comment.
Oh, we got the motion.
We had discussed, we had the motion on the floor, we had time for discussion.
No, it's not, but everyone found a amendment.
It's not about the motion. Just go ahead and finish your question, I'm.
Okay.
So who made the motion then?
Doug did. I seconded.
He announced.
No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Good luck to everybody on their elections tomorrow.
Man, motion carried. Thank you, folks. Yes, Leroy, all right, Leroy has the floor, he moved on, he's over.
Well, I was first married, of course, you have to understand, I'm born in Tennessee, I'm very sweet.
Right.
And I said, um, I said, well, if you don't like what's going on, you know, get out. That's what I did, so I'm quite sure she did what I said.
I'll take that back to the board next week.
That's a good story.
I'm pretty sure Gary regrets it too, because I didn't like politics before he ran. But I was there supporting him, and then I got involved, and I told him, look, I created a monster.
Neither night.
I gave that, I gave basically that exact thing to Amy.